Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. This is a special meeting, and it's our last one to give our citizens an opportunity to talk to us about the Charter Amendment that is on your ballot for November 4th. So I'd like to introduce, do a roll call first of all. I'm going to start from the end so that it's easier for me. Counselor Posh?
Here.
Counselor Petrus?
Here.
Counselor Sheets?
Here.
Counselor Cobb?
Here.
Counselor Russ, Vice President Russell had a family event this evening, so she's excused. And I'd also like to introduce our panelists. The former Chair of the Charter Review Commission that met between 2023 and 2024, Linda Strieffsky, and then Cleveland Heights Law Director Bill Hanna. So, welcome, everybody. What we're going to get started with is a summary of the Charter Review Commission work and recommendations. Ms. Strieffsky is going to do that part of it for us. So, listen and see. Q and A will follow both of our introductions, and so you'll have an opportunity to ask your questions.
Good evening. It's great to be with you tonight. I appreciate Council hosting this discussion, and I appreciate all of you being here and for your interest in the Charter. I was the Chair of the most recent Charter Review Commission, but I'm here tonight in my individual capacity. I am going to provide a brief overview of major changes to the Charter that are proposed by Council. The handout that you got, that was prepared by Law Director Hanna, goes through the Charter section by section, and it's a very helpful resource. But I'm going to proceed by topic, and I will refer to article and section numbers as I go. And as I said, I'm only going to hit the major changes, and this is just to allow more time for your questions. So first to touch on the history of the Charter. Our Charter was written in 1921, so, long time ago. It has been amended from time to time, but only in a piecemeal way. And even the amendments that were done for the elected mayor were piecemeal. So it could use an overall update. The 2019 ballot issue which got us an elected mayor focused only on changes to the Charter to add a mayor instead of a city manager. It did not include other changes that the supporters knew were needed because Ohio law limits the scope of a citizen initiative, which is what we were doing in 2019. So the supporters knew that there were more changes that would be a good idea, that would help with balance of powers, but they had to stick just to changes directly related to the mayor. So this leaves us with a Charter that doesn't quite fit our current form of government. It still includes remnants of the old city manager form of government. And while I have heard suggestions that Council should have proposed only some of the amendments, my understanding is that the Charter has never been updated as a whole, and it seems that we're overdue for that kind of an update. Reflecting this unfinished business, Council directed the Commission to recommend changes to the Charter in the best interest of the city, specifically including changes related to an elected mayor, changes that might have been suggested by the prior Commission that was operating in 2019, and also directed us to conduct other due diligence. Not to favor one form of, one branch of government over another, but to suggest changes in the best interest of the city. And I believe that the Commission followed those instructions. And by the way, the draft that was proposed by the Commission that I chaired did incorporate many of the recommendations of the 2019 Commission, which did a lot of really good work. So, the development of the Charter proceeded over six years. I want to note that because, again, some people have expressed a view that the ballot issue was rushed. If you go to the city website, at the top of the homepage, there is a really helpful link that will take you to the summary that you were given tonight, that Law Director Hanna prepared, as well as all of the recordings of the meetings, all the minutes, all the reports, et cetera. I also want to note that the draft that was proposed by Council proposes a few changes to the draft that the Commission proposed. I have no issues with the changes that Council made. We're going to take questions tonight, but you're welcome to call me if you have questions on the Charter. My phone number is (216) 533-6941. I will repeat my number again at the end, so you can jot it down. So let me move on to the major changes that are proposed. And these fall into three categories. The first category is changes that address the balance of powers and the elected mayor. The second is governance operations, and the third, I would call elections and modernizing the Charter. So for the first category, amendments to complete the transition to an elected mayor, I'll touch on a handful of these changes. The first is changes in Article III, Section 6 and 12, Article IV, Section 4, and Article V, Section 3. Since the change in government, there has been a lot of attention to the so-called right of inquiry. This is a city manager remnant that's in the Charter today, and you don't find a provision like this in other charters that provide for an elected mayor. So if you look at other cities that have elected mayors, and most, almost all of them do, none of them have anything like that constraint on Council's ability to get information from the administration. The proposed Charter retains most of current Article III, Section 6, as to the mayor's authority over the administration of the city, but it deletes the constraints on Council's right of inquiry. And it also adds several other measures to improve sharing information and transparency. It requires that the mayor and Council collaborate in good faith for the best interest of the city. It requires that the city administrator and other administration officials respond to Council inquiries and, upon request, attend meetings. It requires the city administrator to submit periodic reports as required by ordinance. On the mayor's executive powers, while retaining the principle that the mayor will supervise the departments, the proposed Charter clarifies that this is done through the directors and references that there are some exceptions as to Council responsibilities. It also requires the mayor to perform duties that are set by the Charter or by ordinance. This is in Article IV, Section 3. Regarding the mayor's legislative powers and veto rights, the proposed Charter provides that the mayor's participation in Council's executive sessions is by invitation of the Council President, subject to veto by a majority of Council. It adds that at Council meetings, the mayor is subject to Council rules on speaking opportunities and time limits. These provisions reflect that Council meetings are the legislative body's domain. This is in Article IV, Section 5. For veto rights, the current Charter permits the mayor to veto ordinances and resolution. The Commission recommended that the mayor not be permitted to veto initiative measures because that's counterintuitive to having an initiative process. The Council's draft adds that the mayor also may not veto ordinances, putting a referendum, a recall, or charter amendments on the ballot. This is in Article IV, Section 5. Regarding departments, the proposed Charter provides that Council determines the functions of each department and may create new positions or departments. This is not an outlier approach. The Commission and Council found this was common in Ohio cities that have a mayor-council form of government. Council is allowed to combine or abolish departments, other than the ones that are mandated by the Charter. The mandated departments are law, finance, planning, public safety, public works, community services, Parks and Rec, and HR. HR is new to that list. As to directors, Article V, Section 2, the proposed Charter retains the mayor's right to appoint directors. It also retains Council's right to approve directors of law, finance, and planning, and it adds to that list the directors of human resources and public works. It retains the mayor's right to remove directors, except that removal of only the director of law or finance is subject to Council's approval. Regarding filling vacancies, do we have any fans here of filling vacancies? Because we do that a lot here in Cleveland Heights. We had a Charter Amendment a few years ago that added a deadline for Council appointments, which was a good idea. The proposed Charter extends that deadline from 45 to 60 days to give a little bit more time for vetting applicants. The elected officials who came to see the Commission thought that the timeline for an election after an appointment was too tight. We've seen a couple of times in recent years when an appointment was made and an election occurred in the same calendar year. And there are balancing considerations at play between putting the seat on a ballot as soon as possible or allowing some additional time before an election. The proposed Charter provides for more time to lapse before a seat is on the ballot for the unexpired term. As to mayoral vacancies, in Article IV, Section 7, the provision that is now in the Charter has a line of succession and no deadlines. And we know from experience in Cleveland Heights that deadlines are good. We need deadlines. The proposed Charter streamlines the succession, and it adds deadlines. It also removes a requirement that the appointed mayor must be a current member of Council. With respect to finances and the budget, the proposed Charter includes procedures for development of the budget based on those that were followed in 2023 for the budget in 2024. The administration and Council uniformly praised that process. It worked well, so the proposed Charter says, "Let's do it again." Salary review for mayor and Council. This is in Article III, Section 5. I want to emphasize that the Commission proposed the salary provision changes that are in the Charter. No elected officials asked for this change. Our current salaries are low compared to other cities. You can look at the Charter Review Commission report for information on that. The proposed Charter requires Council to determine salary for the mayor and Council every four years, but there's no requirement that any change be made. Now, we know that our Council doesn't make changes in salaries very often because they haven't changed it since 2004. So that's a long time to have a salary set with no changes. And as I said, we're lagging other cities. Also, as is provided by Ohio law, the proposed Charter states that no change in salary may take effect during the current term of the people voting on it. So Council cannot give itself an immediate raise. We also included to provide some data points for salary considerations, a requirement that the Civil Service Commission would submit a report to Council every four years recommending salaries, and we also included some objective criteria to be taken into account in considering adjustments. On the subject of Council meetings, you remember that during COVID, there was an Ohio law change that allowed virtual meetings, but that's no longer in effect. Cleveland Heights is a home rule city, so we can provide in its Charter for virtual meetings. The proposed Charter permits virtual meetings with Council to set rules by ordinance. So this just provides some flexibility. Changes to elections. The proposed Charter changes the required signatures from a percentage of voters to a fixed number, so it makes it a little bit easier for candidates. It's 300 signatures for mayoral candidates, 225 for council candidates. The current requirement is about 359 signatures, so it changes them, but not by much. And the more important thing is that it's easier to know what you have to do as a candidate. Regarding the votes that are needed for initiative referendum and recall petitions and amendments to the Charter, this is in Article VIII and Article XII. The current Charter states the number of votes needed as a formula. It's a percentage of electors, without tying that determination to any particular date. The proposed Charter keeps the same percentage, but it applies it to a percentage of votes in the last general election. So it's an easier thing to calculate. It doesn't float every day as the percentage of electors does. There's a chart in our report that compares the current and proposed requirements, but the change reduces the number of signatures needed by about half. One of the modernizing features in the proposed Charter relates to ethics and training. This is in Article XI. The proposed Charter adds a new article on ethics and training that reflects modern approaches. For instance, the conflict of interest rules will apply to not only the mayor and Council, but also to all employees. The city currently has no consistent program for orientation and training of elected officials. Input from elected officials led us to consider including some requirements for training, and based on the Lakewood Charter, the proposed Charter requires that newly-elected Council members and mayors will have some training, a specific number of hours, to be completed within 90 days of taking office. Regarding removal of a Council member, the proposed Charter retains the current provision for removing a Council member. This is in Article III, Section 3, but it makes a few changes. It deletes one of the current triggers, persistent failure to abide by Council rules. It increases the votes needed for removal to three-quarters of Council, which is a very high bar. There is no change to forfeiture of office by the mayor. Council has no authority in the current Charter or the proposed Charter to remove a mayor. So we're just sticking with what we already have in the Charter. I'll mention one item that was proposed by the Commission that is not in the proposed amendment, and that is ranked choice voting. Council determined to defer consideration of ranked choice voting to allow for further Council consideration of the change and a more robust program of public education. Thanks very much for your attention. Again, my phone number is (216) 533-6941. I look forward to the discussion this evening.
I forgot to introduce myself, so my name is Gail Larson, and I'm currently serving as President of Council. Two Charter Review Commissions, the 2019 version and the 2023/2024 version, worked very hard on amending the city's Charter to align with the current form of government with three equal branches, executive, legislative, and judicial. Council had 22 hours of Charter Review Work Sessions. All of these meetings are available for your viewing on the Cleveland Heights YouTube channel. Most of the members of Council attended those work sessions. Council followed our plan to have our review of the Charter Review Commission work done to submit to the Law Department. We submitted it in April this year, planning to have the Law Department's vetted version given back to us in June. The legislation attached documents were shared for the first reading at Council's August 18, 2025 meeting. We held three public hearings the week of August 25, during which we made a few adjustments to the red-line version. Would we have liked more time? Certainly. That did not happen. This is not a power grab. It is a roadmap that will help future mayors and councils work better together for the citizens of Cleveland Heights. In order to get the Charter Amendment on the November 4 ballot, Council approved the current revised version at our September 2 meeting, and that revised version is posted on the website. In addition to this forum, the forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters, Council held two Committee of the Whole meetings, one at Noble Library, and then this one this evening, giving the citizens the opportunity to ask questions of us. When I attended all 22 hours of Charter Amendment Work Sessions, I never intended to do so, as has been suggested, quote, "to give Council more power." I did this work to align the city's Charter with a new mayor-council form of government, to update the Charter, as Linda said, that's not been updated for a long, very long time, except for the, when we put the amendment on there to have a mayor's form of government, including replacing gender-specific language with gender-neutral language. You're always welcome to reach out to any of us to ask us questions between now and the 4th, and we have heard many of you concern, express concern that this Charter Amendment gives Council too much power. I've selected a few articles and sections to begin to address those concerns tonight. During the Q and A, I'm happy to respond to additional concerns if you have. We also have Linda here and Law Director Hanna, as well as my other Council members who were present at those meetings. I'll be referring to Law Director Hanna's summary to give you the sense of why the Charter Review Commission and Council's own revisions were acceptable to those Council members who attended Council's Charter Review meetings. Council Interactions with City Administration. This is found in Article III, Section 12, and Director Hanna describes this as, quote, "speaks to the good faith, collaboration between Council and the mayor that this Council believes the city's residents deserve and desire, including the ability of Council to communicate with members of the new administration, and further underscores the reasonable expectation that Council inquiries will be responded to by members of the administration in a complete and accurate manner." And finally provides that Council may require that directors, chiefs, or their designees attend meetings of Council or Council committees by request or by ordinance. Council believes that the recommendation of the Charter Review Commission as modified by Council is consistent with the practice of the overwhelming majority of other cities in this area and throughout the state. Summary of Article V for Law Director Hanna. The departments, quote, "were revised to provide that the Council, rather than the mayor, determine the functions and duties of each department and may create new positions or departments." Council believes this is the predominant practice in Ohio cities and adds human resources to the list of charter-created city departments, unquote. I also want, before I complete this summary, if you all recall, there was a study that was commissioned by former Mayor Sarin by a company called Burgess &amp; Burgess. And former Mayor Sarin commissioned this group to, quote, "do community research, engagement, and strategic communications," unquote. They recommended in their Best Practices document dated April 3, 2025, that the city set limits on power to avoid overreach. Specifically from the Burgess &amp; Burgess Report, quote, "The mayor's powers should be robust, but not unchecked. Cleveland Heights can look to Drouin's experience where a public vote reduces the mayor's powers after initial overreach, setting limitations on the mayor's power, such as requiring Council approval for the budget. Significant policy changes and/or appointments can create a necessary check and balance system that ensures that the mayor doesn't dominate the decision-making process." This amended, unquote, the amended Charter does just that, per the Burgess &amp; Burgess statement. I support this Charter Amendment, and I ask that you vote yes when you vote before or on November 4. And I also want to say thank you for coming this evening. So unless my colleagues, any one of them would like to speak? Anybody? All right. I'm going to open it up for Q and A. Would ask you to speak at the, stand up and speak at the microphone that Mr. Barker has established for us so that it can be heard on the recording. This recording is not live, but it will be available tomorrow should you wish to go back and review it. So, questions?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I have two questions. I'm wondering if someone, maybe Linda or Mr. Hanna, can give us a quick synopsis of the powers the mayor will have that he or she didn't have before, and the powers that Council will have that he or she didn't have before? Just so we hear them all in one place. And then, secondly, and I realize there's some absurdity in this question, given the previous mayor, but obviously there was Council input on this. Was there any mayoral input on this? Thank you.
I'll let you first start on the first part of that, but on the second part of it, I would say that when the Charter Review Commission was meeting, and we met for about a year, we invited the mayor and all of members of Council, as well as former Council President Hart, to come to the Charter Review Commission to discuss their ideas about what should or shouldn't be included in the revised Charter. We also had Mayor Weelo and Mayor Weiss come and visit us. But the mayor did come and talk to us. He filled out a questionnaire, and he came and talked to us for two hours, I would say. And that recording is available. So we did get recommendations from the mayor, and we took those into account. We also had comments from most of the members of Council that were submitted in the form of questionnaire responses. Again, those are available on the website. And all of the Council members, except for one, did come to visit us and spent at least a half hour, some even an hour, talking to us about their ideas about the Charter. So we had all that input before our draft was presented to the public and finalized and presented to Council.
Can I add something to that real quick? Something I learned when I was appointed a year ago April to this body was the Charter Review Commission was comprised of people from both Council and from the mayor. So the mayor had his representatives on the Charter Review Commission, and some of them, for example, were very for this ranked choice voting, and hopefully that'll be on the ballot. But that's probably the biggest difference between what his primary supporters were saying. In the end, I think most people want to see that, but at this point, and maybe Director Hanna can explain why it doesn't make sense to do it immediately, but it's something we should consider very in the near future. But the core issue is, was the mayor represented? And he did have representatives on the, on the panel, so.
Thank you. I don't have a list made up of the additional powers conferred upon the mayor or removed from the mayor or conferred upon Council or removed from Council, but I would say that in general, the changes are more, trying to find, oh, there. I'm just trying to see who asked the question. They're more around the edges. So I can walk through quickly and put out, point out a couple of those, of examples of those, those changes. One, salaries and other compensation, which is formatted differently than it had been and provides a schedule that's different than it, than the prior lack of schedule, the every-four-year schedule that Linda mentioned. But the power, the authority to establish the compensation of the mayor, of the Council members, and of all the employees was previously with the Council and remains with the Council. So it looks a little bit different, but it's actually not substantively different. There is a change in Section 6 of Article III, which is appointees. It previously provided that Council can appoint or employ employees or independent contractors or vendors to carry out work that Council determines needs to be done. The change now is that when Council takes action to do that, and to authorize a contract with a consultant, for example, Council President can sign that contract rather than the mayor. The mayor signs all of the other contracts. So that's a minor change. That's the only additional contracting, that's the only authority that Council has to execute a contract. All of the other contracting authority remains with the mayor. Council has a new authority, not so much vis a vis the mayor, but as Linda explained, to meet virtually and to provide for city public bodies to meet virtually in a, in a more comprehensive way than it previously had, currently has. Currently, there's an ordinance which allows the mayor to authorize public bodies to meet virtually, but Council under the specific language of the existing Charter is not able to meet virtually. So this change, which is in Article III, Section 7, allows Council and all of the other public bodies, boards and commissions, committees of the city, to meet virtually under rules and procedures that'll be established by ordinance. And the general framework is consistent with the safeguards and the procedures that the state legislature utilized back in 2020, 22, 2022, 22. So that there's notice, there's an opportunity for people to know how to patch in, how to participate, if that's provided for the impact of the loss of a quorum in a meeting. All of those things are detailed. So that's a slightly different authority than previously existed, but it doesn't take anything away from the office of mayor. Council subpoena power in connection with investigations is a new authority that exists under the Charter. Linda can probably speak to the genesis of that provision, but it doesn't.
The mayor suggested it.
It doesn't, it doesn't take anything away from the mayor, and I think that came up during the Charter Review Commission work, correct? The ability of Council by ordinance or resolution to require that directors and chiefs attend Council meetings or Council Committee of the Whole meetings, or to, for a specific meeting, invite a director or chief or their designee to a meeting is new, but it is the overwhelming rule throughout the state. Cleveland Heights over the last several years has been an outlier in terms of the lack of attendance of directors and chiefs at meetings. This doesn't in and of itself require that directors and chiefs attend all meetings, but it allows Council to make that determination, and that's a procedure. but it allows council to make that determination, and that's a procedure that's been utilized in other cities as well. Lakewood and Beachwood both have something along these same lines. The mayor, the limitations on the veto power, as Linda pointed out, those are new limitations, but they're very specific, and those issues arise in very limited circumstances. And so, and in general, it's consistent with existing law. What it does by putting it in the charter is to simply make it more clear, so that arguments can be avoided. Charter amendments, for example, the law is crystal clear that a mayor in a charter city can't veto a council's sending of a charter amendment to the voters, as long as it's done timely, for their consideration. That is not in the current charter. It's in the proposed amended charter, just to make that clear again, so that everybody knows what the rules are. There is an additional protection for the mayor under the legislative authority under Article Four, which is that council does not have the ability to unreasonably refuse or delay legislation that a mayor might want to introduce. The ability to introduce legislation is in the existing charter, has been there since the change that was made in 2019. But there was nothing that said that council had to introduce legislation immediately or within any given timeframe. And so, as this was worked through, it seemed appropriate to ensure that that authority to introduce legislation wasn't just in name only. And so this gives some, some teeth to that provision. The provisions on absence and vacancy are more detailed, as Linda described, but I don't think that they're substantively different from what's, what's currently present. It just provides, again, a procedure for determining how this happens and when, so that we don't have delays. The, the most significant delay that I can think of that happened in recent history was in 2020-ish, there was a vacancy on council. There was, at that time, no council, excuse me, no charter provision that established a deadline for filling a council vacancy, and the council, at that point in time, took over a year to fill that. There was actually litigation filed about that. Subsequently, the charter was amended to, to provide the 45-day window, and that has generally worked to ensure that appointments are made timely. I don't think it's, I don't think it's been missed since it was inserted into the charter and approved by voters. And then, the last principal authority shift that I'm thinking about is the requirement for council approval of the removal of the director of law or the director of finance. There's also an additional specification of the director of human resources being a position, and Department of Human Resources being a department created by charter. That's not currently the case. And that, that position requires confirmation, along with law, planning, and finance, as does director of public works. So there's confirmation required on the appointment of all of those positions. There's confirmation of council required for the removal of just the director of law and director of finance. And I know there's been some discussion about that and whether that's an unusual provision, and I would say that it is not. You can, you can go to amlegal.com and look up the charter and ordinances of, you know, cities in the area throughout the state, and there are a large number of communities that have one or more or all directors protected, to some extent, by requirements for council confirmation of their approval. And in a lot of cases, it's a two-thirds council majority approval in those cases. This is a simple majority, and it's only for the two positions. Just by way of example, if anyone wants to look, Beachwood, Brexville, Independence, North Royalton, Richmond Heights, Solon, Westlake, Green, Village of Richfield, City of Aurora, Avon Lake, Wickliffe, these communities all have requirements for council approval of the removal of one or more directors. In the case of Solon, it's every director, and there's an additional for cause requirement there, which isn't present in a lot, it's in a few charters, it's not in a lot of them, and that's not present in the proposed amended charter in Cleveland Heights either.
If I could make one other comment about the, the composition of the Charter Review Commission. The Charter Review Commission had nine members, and my recollection is there were six appointed by council and three by the mayor. But I have to say that in the course of our discussions, there wasn't really division by who appointed you. You know, we, we weren't given instructions by, that I'm aware of, anybody was given instructions by one appointing authority versus the other that said, "Do this, don't do that." We had pretty robust discussions about issues and the votes on different issues. Sometimes they were unanimous, sometimes they were split decisions. But at the end of the day, the final report in the final amended charter was approved on an eight-to-one vote. So there was pretty much consensus among people on the commission about the final product.
And just on that point, the proposed amended charter provides for a set number of nine members of a Charter Review Commission in the future, with seven appointed by council and two by the mayor, and the mayor's appointments are not subject to any review or approval by council, so that nobody gets bogged down in that process, because the last process was, was bogged down. And, and then finally, there was one more shift that I, that I wanted to mention, and this came up earlier, but the change in terms of who, other than those departments that are created by charter, who creates or abolishes or combines or reorganizes departments from mayor to council, that is a shift in, in authority and power. But I'm not sure I've ever seen a city that had the mayor authorized to create or abolish departments of a city. It's a very, very unusual provision that appeared for the first time in the 2019 amendments, Issue Twenty-Six. I think it was just part of that work that went into that process, and it's a, it's a complicated subject, and that ended up in the charter. But changing it back to council is consistent with certainly over 90% of other cities. And I looked quickly to see in this area what other cities provide in that regard. And Shaker, Richmond Heights, University Heights, Beachwood, Pepper Pike, South Euclid, Solon, Oakwood, Lindhurst, all of those communities have the authority to create or abolish or reorganize or prescribe the functions and responsibilities of a department reside with the legislative authority of the council. So that is a change, but it's, it's sort of going back to the mainstream.
I'd like to add that at each of those 22 hours where we met, council met Law Director Hannah and Linda Strzezewski, and often members, every time, we had several members of the Charter Review Commission in the room with us, working through all these different articles and sections. So we, and Harriet Applegate's here, I don't know if anybody else is here, Harriet served on the Charter Review Commission. So we were always depending on them to answer the questions that we have, that we are beginning from citizens as well, and be able to understand what it is that this charter amendment does accomplish. And with that, I'll give it to Jean. Go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Aslan. I hate using a mic. I feel like I could do it better with my own voice. First of all, for the provision about combining, abolishing, creating departments, the charter prior to my amendment, meaning I was the principal drafter of the mayoral 2019 amendment, had council doing that. I went back and thought, why is this an issue? Why is everyone making this issue? What happened? I went back into my notes. I have no idea why we moved it from council to mayor. I will tell you honestly, I think that was my mistake. So I don't want people to think this is a, this, I mean, honestly, I looked back, I have notes for like why we made every change, and a lot of changes, because we were limited to a single subject, was where it said, "City manager." We literally went, "Mayor," unless we had to create new provisions for the mayor, such mayoral powers, which the city manager didn't have. So why we changed council to mayor, which was not done anywhere else when I was drafting this, doesn't exist. And also, I have no notes on that section and why we did it. So I actually think that was my error, that it should have never been moved to mayor. So I screwed up draft, I think. I mean, honest to God, I'm pretty sure that's what happened. I shouldn't say that publicly. I don't know if I should say that publicly, because now I probably have clients going like, "Oh, nice job." But anyways, just wanted to put that out there so that there is some background as like why we did what we did and how we did it, and how something might have just gotten missed or screwed up. Also, I just want to know, or I want to ask Mr. Hannah, on charter home rule cities. When you have a charter home rule city, if something is not stated in the charter but is provided for in the Ohio Vice Code, it can go to the Ohio Vice Code? So this kind of goes to subpoena powers. Subpoena powers have been, in the Ohio Vice Code, are offered to the legislative body since 1953. So I just want Director Hannah to maybe explain how like charter home rule cities can, you know, can take or cannot take parts of what's under Ohio Vice Code in the municipal section.
They, they can. And I think.
We actually had subpoena powers since like 1953, right?
Although the language of the charter currently indicates that the home rule authority will be exercised in the manner prescribed by the charter or by council ordinance. And so there's an argument that certain statutory authorities aren't necessarily automatically available unless they're incorporated by council by ordinance. And so this provision being in the charter, if this is approved, removes any question from that subject.
Thank you, Jean. That was, I appreciate your apology.
I can't find any notes.
As thorough as you are, I find that hard to believe, but it sounds like you checked.
I was gonna say, maybe somebody did it when I wasn't around that day.
Okay.
I was also part of that group, and I don't remember any conversation to do that either.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Would you like a committee decision that we should make that change?
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, to the microphone, please.
What is going to be the role of the city administrator in the new charter versus the previous charter?
The role doesn't really change very much. The only things that I believe are, are done with the proposed charter is that there is some more specific requirements along the lines of, you know, council can, by invitation, have the city administrator attending meetings and can require that the administrator submit periodic reports. So it's, I think it's typical in other cities that have an elected mayor with a city administrator, that the city administrator, for instance, always attends city council meetings. We didn't experience that. So if a city administrator is being used effectively, I think it's probably the case that the city administrator does participate in meetings and is available to answer questions and, you know, work with, with city council to move things along. So the changes in the charter in several places really make it clearer that the city administrator and other city officials respond to inquiries, they attend meetings when invited, you know, things like that.
And, and it's not so much a change in what the role of the administrator might be, but the qualifications of the administrator are detailed a bit further in the proposed amended charter. It indicates that that person should have administrative, executive and administrative training and experience that's currently present, that's related to municipal and/or other governmental operations, to, to ensure that the work, history of this person is going to be more immediately useful to the city than it might otherwise be if, if you didn't have those additional requirements. I think all of the folks that have been city administrator actually satisfy these criteria, but it does put a safeguard in place going forward. And then, there's a change that is sort of role-related. The current language says that the city administrator will be responsible for the preparation of the budget for presentation to council, and the proposed amended language indicates that the city administrator will assist in the preparation of the annual budget.
Do my colleagues have anything that they would like to add, or we're doing okay? All right, any other questions? I, go ahead, Michael. Thank you. I hesitate to call it so early.
You knew I wasn't going to sit quietly the whole time. There we go. Sorry, Michael Bennett, like with Jean, I was part of the group that promoted Issue Twenty-Six. And we, many of us, and we have a letter in The Observer saying, "We see this as the continuation of the work we did back then, that we were unable to have the rest of the charter really create the structure we needed in government." My question is, and I'm going to ask a question, I know, I know the answer, but for the benefit of the audience, there are likely and possibly other changes that might, will be needed, might or will be needed in the future. Can you speak to councils, at least your view in, in the current council, openness to future changes if we get in and find out, okay, we believe that this is the charter that gives us the structure that we weren't able to do in 2019. Going forward now, we are confident the proposed amended charter creates that structure and the safeguards and the, and the distribution of power, I'll call it that, the balance of power and responsibilities. But what happens if some of that doesn't work? Are there other things that you think of that could work? Can you talk about the process of further amendments that might be needed once we do this wholesale amendment that hasn't been done in so long?
The opportunity is now to make this big step forward, the opportunity to see how this works, if it's voted yes by the majority of our citizens, is that we are all paying attention, right? Director Hannah, Linda Strzezewski, the members of the Charter Review Commission, they're all going to be paying attention to see how this document works. And if there's something that's failing or needs to be strengthened or revised, we will make note of that, and then in a future situation, we can amend this charter. We do not need to wait 10 years or five years. We can put an amendment forward to the voters to make that particular article or section work better for this new form of government. Other than that, I, Director Hannah, do you have anything you can add to that?
I was just going to add that there have been amended charters or restated charters adopted in a similar fashion, similarly comprehensive in Beachwood and Lakewood in particular over the last six to eight years. And in each of those cases, there have been subsequent charter amendments, I think, certainly in Lakewood, and I believe in Beachwood as well, because the, the process invites an ongoing examination of how things are working, as you said. And under the Ohio Constitution, a charter amendment can be introduced really at any time, so long as the correct process is followed.
Jean?
Can I just add a follow-up to that? Can you go through the like processes?
It's a rule tonight, Jean.
It's a rule tonight. Okay, can you go through with the process or what occurs if this comprehensive charter amendment does not pass?
I don't have an answer for that. Do you have an answer for that? Would have to convene another Charter Review Commission?
Not necessarily.
Right. I mean, if it doesn't pass, then there's no changes to the charter, and the city hasn't blown up with the existing charter. But to the council president's point and Linda's point, you could have a Charter Review Commission convene and look at whether changes ought to be made to this. Council could take that question up directly and adopt legislation to send some or all of these back to the voters and, and have the voters take another look at it. Yeah.
Yeah, council can do it on their own. They don't have to appoint another Charter Review Commission. And I would say that having had two Charter Review Commissions in the last six years, you might have a hard time seating another one, because it's a lot of work. It is a lot of work. And I, I know that members of the 2019 Commission who worked for a year and a half were quite frustrated that their, all of their work, and it was tremendous work, was just put on a shelf. And, you know, we reviewed it and we used a lot of it, but it does, it does represent a lot of work. Not that it's perfect, I'm not suggesting it's perfect, but it was thoughtful. And I think it's very important to emphasize that we now have a new form of government with a half-baked charter, and that's not really helpful for anybody. So I think the better course of action is to approve the amended charter, and of course, we could tinker with it in the future. Council can tinker with it next year if they want to. We could always tinker with it. But there's modernizing changes that are made in this document. I think updating the ethics provisions is very important. I think cleaning up some of the language to make it more consistent with how we talk today is, is important, but it's, you know, it's a 100-year-old document. a hundred-year-old document that kind of needs a refresh. Um, so I think it'd be a good idea to pass it.
First, I, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, this is a very important vote, and unfortunately, a lot of people are not paying attention, uh, to this. So please, um, speak to your neighbors and your friends and encourage them, if they're not educated about the charter changes, to please, uh, review them. And there's still time to reach out to anyone on council or Linda, um, to get any questions, uh, that you have that need to get answered. This is not a radical document. As you've heard, these provisions appear in other municipalities, but we need to move forward with this. We can't continue to keep kicking the can down the road and have one charter review commission after another without putting something on the ballot and let the voters decide, um, what, what, what we need, um, to go forward. So please, um, talk to your friends and I, I thank you all again for coming out tonight. We were criticized for rushing this, um, to the ballot, but we had to get it, um, into the board of elections in order to get it on the ballot in November. And my concern was if we didn't get it on the ballot in November, it may not get back until next November. And, and we can't wait.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm Rolf Bergman. Well, the last point is how do we, uh, you, you mentioned a little bit, how do we communicate? We came here to find out what it was. We certainly find out that we want to vote for it. But people tend to, if they don't know anything, they vote no. Um, so how do we get the message out that this is a good thing to vote for? That's the question, I guess.
Well, I, any of those sheets over there that you have in your hand, you're welcome to take a few more for your friends and neighbors this evening. Um, I think it summarizes very well what the changes are. On the website, when you go to the top, go ahead, Harriet.
Harriet Applegate, um, this hasn't come up tonight, but I know it's been talked about for, by a lot of people in the city. Uh, why don't we just do the changes piecemeal? And the reason that that is not workable is because, uh, the Charter Review Commission sent council like five different buckets of changes. It was unbelievably complicated because it, any given change ramified through other sections of the charter. It was a complete nightmare. So you can't, and it, it's like, you know, it'd be like taking somebody's arm off and saying, you know, it's okay. You know, it's just very complicated. And so you, it has to kind of be all of a piece. Rank choice voting is actually, you know, discreet. That's a discreet change, but all the other changes had, had, uh, you know, there was a piece of it in, in this section, another piece in another section, and you had to make so many, it was virtually impossible to extricate, you know, uh, most of these changes, if, if not, maybe some of them were, you know, were okay, but it was, you just can't take out, you know, this change and that change and separate it. So that's, I think, a reason why, uh, it's presented as one piece. And, and Lakewood was alluded. Lakewood, uh, made major revisions to their charter recently, and they just presented it as one piece on the ballot as well.
To go back to the question about how people find out about it, um, I will suggest that in addition to the city's website, which does provide lots of information, um, if you go to the library website, it also includes the voter guide that was published by the legitimate voters, which also has a summary of the charter amendments. Um, there were many articles in recent issues of the Heights Observer that also discussed the charter amendments. And again, you know, you're welcome to call members of council, tell your friends if they have questions to call members of council. They can call me. I'm happy to talk to people who have questions. But I think it is, it is certainly the case that when I have been out and about and just happen to ask people, oh, you know, are you familiar with the proposed charter amendments? Many people are not, um, unfortunately. So I think we do have to do some individual outreach and I do, you know, second and third the motion that if you have friends and neighbors, you know, talk to them about it. And if they don't have information and they want information, help them understand how they can get the information.
The one that, the one that was handed out tonight?
Well, we have a flyer. Um, we have a flyer that we're passing out that many of you probably got on your doorknobs. Um, that gives you some information about the charter as well.
Lou?
The question I have, and I, I really didn't want to, you know, speak tonight, but it, it goes back to getting mixed messages here in terms of having to do all of this now, or to Bill's point, you know, nothing exploded the past few years with the current charter. I mean, is it dysfunctional? Was the mayor dysfunctional or was the charter dysfunctional? That's, that's, that's what I'm walking away with sometimes. So I ask myself, you know, for you to tackle it all at once, I just don't understand the need to tackle this thing all at once, because I don't think people can swallow all of this all at once. It's a big document and it won't look big on the, at the, at the election board, but if you look through it, if you look at what the plane dealer had, there's a lot of content to it. And if it was something that was just done successfully for every election, one at a time for us to handle, I, I don't see, I don't see the panic that it all has to be accomplished in one shot. And that's the argument you're gonna get.
Well, that's an argument we've gotten from a few people, but I think we've also heard from other people that they understand why it's a good idea to update the charter in a more uniform way. You know, it is, it is a document that interacts one section with another. And from a drafting perspective, you know, I'm an attorney, but I agree with what Harriet said. When we had it divided up into buckets, yeah, I could follow the buckets, but would it be helpful for most people to try to follow the buckets who aren't used to reading compare right documents and you see all the red ink and it's very confusing? I think it's easier for people to understand it if you present it all of a piece. And I think it is very telling that when other municipalities have done the kind of update that we're doing to a 100-year-old document, it is typically done as an amended charter because the provisions are so interrelated. And I would argue that it's easier for people to understand it if you do it all at once rather than trying to do things piecemeal.
Is this working? Okay. Um, I, I do think there's a huge amount of urgency for this. Um, you know, I came onto this council with an administration that was ignoring Ohio revised code and using the excuse that, oh, it's not in the charter that I have to share anything with you. Uh, directors don't have to come to meetings. We don't need an HR department. Uh, I think this charter sets a set of expectations for our next mayor. Um, and not that are unreasonable expectations that other cities don't follow, but just normal practices. Um, I mean, when you step into a mayor, I mean, it's not like you're coming from another's mayor job to come into this mayor's job and have experience. Um, we, we found someone that was very unexperienced, that really thought, oh, we don't like HR, we don't like people breathing down our throats. We're gonna stop doing, we still have an HR department, but we had no direct leadership in an HR department that does HR things, um, that this city really needed. And we're about 10% down in our employee counts because of it. Uh, we're not hiring right. So I do think there's a sense of urgency and, you know, getting directors to the meetings and answering an email of a simple inquiry of, well, how many traffic citations do you have to have? I wasn't able to get that from the administration, but I found it in the courts, um, because the courts have that data. So this is the kind, I mean, that's just a silly of, a silly of, a silly example of maybe many. Uh, but there is some expectation here.
Would it be safe to say for all council members that what you just touched on in terms of getting information from directors would have been probably the most critical piece of this charter amendment in terms of functionality and so on? I mean, if you were to, if you were to ask yourselves right now, what was the one piece in this charter amendment that you'd find invaluable? If you get it one piece through, what would it be?
So I don't want to stop anyone from answering your question, but I did want to jump back because you mentioned my comment that the city didn't blow up, which is true. But it's sort of like having a checkup on a boiler at home and, and you find out you can't get the loan. What are you gonna do? You're gonna try to make small repairs around the edges, make sure you get through another season, and then you're gonna come back and you're gonna replace the boiler. Um, I was responding to a question from, from Jean Gordon about what happens if it doesn't pass. And what happens is nothing, um, which means that the city is in, you know, status quo. Uh, that said, having worked with a lot of cities, um, I think doing this in one fell swoop is the way to go for the reasons that , um, Harriet Applegate and Linda pointed out. Um, all of these pieces need to work properly with each other and doing them in multiple, uh, pieces of legislation, multiple ballot questions for voters could leave you in a situation where three of seven are adopted or six of seven or six of 11. And, uh, you could, you could end up in a really bad spot in terms of having to come back and figure out how things work legally. And based on working with other cities, I think that all of the changes in the charter, uh, that is being, uh, the amended charter that's being proposed, um, are helpful. None of them is a, a power grab, none of them, in, in my opinion. Uh, none of them is radical, none of them is unusual. Some of them, in fact, are pushing Cleveland Heights back to the mainstream. And, uh, I, I would certainly be much happier if this were adopted than if it, um, is not adopted. Um, so the fact that the city didn't literally explode, um, doesn't mean that I don't think this should be adopted.
I would like to answer your question, Lou. When I first started, when, when they sent the questionnaire, the Charter Review Commission sent the questionnaire, I would have said to you, inquiry, because I struggled with that for those years, not being able to do my job because I couldn't get information. But I will tell you now, after having been through all the hours that we have been analyzing this, trying to figure out if it's the right thing to do to promote it to the city for adoption, I will say, there are so many more sections that I can't, you know, if I start to list them, it will become cumbersome. We've all talked about them this evening. Uh, but the one, you know, like, just give you an example. When the recall went through for the mayor, there was a moment in there where it appeared that the mayor could re, could veto his own recall. This document will make that clear that that should not happen. So, um, can I just, Jean, um, question about where they can find the information. On the website, go to the top, there's a banner that says charter amendment, and you click on the, the section right there, and it will take you to the documents we talked about tonight, the red line version, which means it shows you what the changes are between the old and the new. And then, Jean, I got, go ahead, and then I've got one thing I want to read.
So I just want to explain once again what we were, what we had to do for the 2019 mayoral amendment, that if we do this piecemeal, creates a problem. So in 2019, recall was housed in section eight. Section eight has recall, referendum, and initiative. That recall section only talked about council recall. So we had to draft our own recall section. There was some stuff that we put in, some stuff we don't. It's somewhat conflicts, it doesn't conflict. So if we do this piecemeal, you have these two recall sections that are not necessarily consistent in how you count things and how we determine how many signatures you need for electors. What does that mean? Cause once again, maybe I didn't do the best drafting. So I, I think what people have to recognize is that there are things that we did in 2019 that we anticipated would be cleaned up in a comprehensive amendment that comes forward. I think one of the biggest problems for this recall and why people don't understand it or don't talk about it or whatever, is that we've had a lot going on in the past four months. And typically you would have, like if you went through UH or you went to Lakewood, you would see signs like four issue, whatever, whatever the recall is. And there would be a pro-recall group and an anti-recall group that would be getting all sorts of information out. And because we were slightly distracted with another issue, that never really happened. And that would have normally happened over a series of time. I, I mean, I think it, you know, typically it is always on citizens to figure out what to do. And all the information is there and it has been there for a very, very long time. Like, you can still go back to the 2019, it's still on the website, the 2019 commission and their red line. You could check their red line against this red line, against the council red line. That information is there. It's, sometimes it takes being an attorney and even, we don't do a great job, but it's all there.
Speaking of recall, how is the recall now for the mayor in this current version?
Yeah, they're, they're now covered in the same place, to get to Jean's point. Um, but I don't know that it has substantive changes. The signature, but I, I don't think the signature change didn't apply to that because it already was correct. The signature requirements for other things were changed, but that one was not changed because Jean drafted it the right way. Thank you, Jean. But Jean is right that one of the things that was a challenge is that because they had to add some things about the mayor that were slightly inconsistent with what was in for council, it made it a little difficult to try to reconcile some of those provisions.
Yeah, I think there, there really aren't substantive changes between the existing Article Four, Section 11, which is recall, and the proposed new Article Eight, Section Three. Um, other than that, uh, as Ms. Gordon pointed out, uh, these are now in, uh, council and mayoral recall. Elected official recalls are all found in Article Eight rather than being in two separate places.
I think there's a clarity on the definition of what electors, what election, there was some, there was lack clarity when you said electors.
Right, but that, that applies, that change applies to council because it was drafted correctly in the section that you did for the mayor. So it, it goes to votes in the last election as opposed to electors.
It, it was correctly specified, but I do think it's been improved now that you mentioned that because it makes it clear that this is a mathematical question. It's, uh, signatures equal in number to at least 25% of the total votes cast at the last preceding general municipal election or mayoral election. And, um, in some cities, there have been questions about what does it mean, um, 25% of the, uh, registered voters voting at the last election. Um, there are some cases out there where courts have found that could mean, um, the actual people who voted, which makes it sort of an impossibility to figure out, um, who you need to get signatures from and disenfranchises anyone who didn't previously vote. Um, and, and that's how the, the controlling cases have come down on that. But this language takes that question off the table and makes it more clear.
So I don't, um, I don't have a question as much as I have a statement, and I don't have it prepared, so, uh, bear with me. Um, but I watched you all, um, the council on some of those Saturdays where you all chunked through all the work of reviewing the Charter Review Commission, and I applaud you with that, on that work. Um, I also applaud the Charter Review and their work. This has not been easy. My biggest concern was that, given what I would call the trauma of the last four years, my concern was that the charter was gonna go too far towards, uh, imbalancing power and, and putting power in the hands of council. Um, I've read this through. I'm glad I'm here tonight because I'm really getting my, my answers, uh, answers to my questions. Um, and I think I had one other thought, but, uh, I will just close with, um, I feel really comfortable with this. I'm voting yes on it. And I'm gonna encourage the folks that I know to vote yes, because I really think that this gets us, um, in a healthier, uh, step forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Go ahead, sir, and then I'm gonna read something. Go ahead, go ahead, to the microphone, please.
Cause I'm, 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 uh, I'm gonna ditto everything she said. I, um, this is new to me. I'm usually a behind the scenes guy, but I, I came here curious. Um, I've heard a lot of rumors, a lot of back and forth. I'm on Nextdoor almost daily. So I've seen so many different perspectives on this, um, issue. Um, I was, and I'm, like she said, I'm not prepared. I just wanted to say, cause I'm curious. But I was taken with your, your passion, uh, council president, Larson, yes, that, uh, when you mentioned that this is not a power grab. That when you mentioned that this is not a power grab. And then I've heard some of the people talking and some of the comments, people were saying, you know, that I've heard some folks are for it. Some people are curious about the timing and this, that, and the other. And I also heard that a lot of people don't even know what this charter agreement is. They can go to the website. I've been to the website. I love this piece you just gave me. But I'm also been in different circles. I've been in different circles where a lot of people are confused. And your passion for that subject that you mentioned about the power grab is kind of what got me curious. I'm pretty much, I'm fairly new to Cleveland Heights. And I figure, I'm actually new to Cleveland Heights, falling in love with this city. And so I want to be involved. So I'm starting to come to the meetings. But coming from Cleveland and being close to prior, maybe four or five administrations, I know the mayors. I've been pretty close. As a photographer, I've worked for about the last five of them. And so I guess there's probably lines drawn between council and the mayor that's pretty drawn, because everybody sees that pretty much every night on the news. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out, this power grab thing, there's a lot of, there are a number of people who are thinking that same thing. That there's a power grab. I hear you say there's an urgency here. And the information I am getting is kind of council-heavy. And so, maybe based on what I've heard here, I've learned a lot. I'll study some more. But maybe somebody here, maybe you guys can tell me, what is the role of the mayor? Because I think you had a general manager, you went to a mayor situation. It sounded like the mayor situation worked, didn't work. You had a lot of issues. And maybe that's why a lot of people figured that there's this power grab. Because now it's like, are we going to put the mayor in his place? I'm not sure. I don't even know. But I'm curious. So maybe if somebody could explain to me what the role, I don't want to say, because I don't want to prolong this, what his role was prior to this charter arrangement, agreement? Or what is his role going to be after? That's what I would like to know.
I would like to answer that from my perspective. The mayor, to me, is the head of the administration of the city, the head of the executive branch. We are the legislative branch. The mayor can bring legislation to us, and the mayor often does. A lot of the legislation you will see at a council meeting is mostly introduced by the mayor and his staff. The mayor, working in consort with the city administrator, which was required by the most recently passed amendment where we installed it when we put in a mayor up as the head of the city, is the leader of the administration. He is the leader of all the employees. He is helped on the daily operations by the city administrator. And if we are working in consort like this charter amendment outlines, we will be a balanced, collaborative government, which you will see working for you. And there won't be obstruction. So I'm looking forward to having this charter guide us. I would like to read one thing. "We all do this for other, much, many other reasons other than the money that we get. It is wonderful to have you here this evening." I have all my, most of my colleagues here this evening. We have the law director. We have Linda Strajewski, who was the former chair of the CRC. There is a lot of talent in this room, people that we see applying for the boards, the commissions. Counselor Cobb just had a meeting this evening where he's looking at applicants. "It's an exciting time to be in Cleveland Heights and to have people engaged. But I want you to take a listen to Article 10, which I believe was written by Drew, primarily or not, the ethics session." General Expectations. Okay. "Be that as it may, this is who we are. And I can say with assurance, as I've worked with my colleagues for the last three and a half years, this is who we are. The citizens of Cleveland Heights rightfully expect city officials, both elected and appointed, and city employees, to behave legally and ethically. All officials and employees are expected to treat each other with respect and to work together for the good of the city and its residents, to make the city a desirable place to live. The citizens also rightfully expect honesty, very, very, very important, respect also important, and fair treatment also important from city officials and employees. City officials have a responsibility to you to educate, monitor, and support all employees and city representatives in this mission. That is who we are. That's who all of us are." Any, if there are any further? So I wanted to comment. I think the, we have under our charter currently the elected mayor, which is the executive branch, and then the council, which is the legislative branch. And it's similar to the structure that we have in our federal government and our state government. When the charter was changed to add an elected mayor, the drafters of those changes were working from a charter that was designed for a city manager who works with a council. But it's a different structure. There's different power balances in that structure. So one of the reasons that I think some people misinterpreted what was happening as what they called a power grab is because of a couple of changes that were made regarding what council could do. So one of them was the one that Jean spoke to, which was that council determines the scope of departments and the directors of departments. Very common in charters for an elected mayor. But that had been under the prior, under our charter today, it says the mayor does those things. So when that was changed to council, there were people who said, oh, you're taking power away from the mayor. Well, he never should have had that power if you're following normal division of responsibilities between the executive and the legislative branches. Similarly, these problems that developed over the right of inquiry, that is a city manager concept. Under a city manager form of government, it normally will say that except for reasons of inquiry, city council is supposed to leave the directors alone and is supposed to work through the city manager. And the theory behind that is council can fire the city manager if they're not happy with what the city manager is doing. When you have an elected mayor, it's a little bit different because city council doesn't have the power to fire the mayor. So they have to work with the mayor, who's also an elected official. And the mayor appoints directors, subject in some cases to approval by city council. So it's the balancing of powers. And I don't view it as a power grab. I viewed it as we were trying to adjust the balance of powers in our charter as it sits today because it doesn't yet do that. There were some changes made in 2019, but not all of the changes that the committee for an elected mayor recognized needed to be made in order to have an effective, functioning mayor, city council form of government. So I hope that's helpful. Any further questions? My fellow colleagues? Any comments, last comments? You're good? Again, thank you for coming this evening. I'm going to adjourn this meeting.